Good evening.
Good evening.
We are at night two of our budget meeting, so I will call this budget meeting the Town and Town Council, March twenty one, twenty twenty four to order. The first item on our agenda is public petitions, communications, and public participation. This is limited to agenda items only. There is a two-minute limit, which will be strictly enforced. There will be a three-minute public participation after the budget presentation this evening. And I would remind everyone that we do have a public hearing on the budget on April second, seven P M here. So if you if you would like to make a statement, you can come up to the table and give us your name and address. If you are online, you can raise your zoom hand or press star nine, and we will alternate between the room and the virtual room. So if there's anyone in the room who would like to speak, please come up to the table. Okay, is there anyone online who would like to speak? Liz Costa, we allow her to unmute. Oh, there we go.
Liz Costa fifty-four to Zaya Lane. I'm hoping you can hear me properly.
Yes.
About two months ago, I know, two months ago, about ten months ago, I approached the principal and the vice principal at the high school advocating, though my last kid had graduated, for more computer science in our high school. We offer one computer science course when you're comparing it to our our brethren.
We are not speaking about the Board of Ed budget this evening. That was presented.
Forget it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can speak at the public hearing, which is scheduled for April second.
Not necessary. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Okay, without seeing any other interested person speaking, we will move on to item three, which is consideration of the town manager's proposed budget.
Great, thank you. And tonight, we're going to cover a few things. I'm going to start out with our finance, run by our financial director, Lisa Hancock, who was here last night. She's here tonight to help answer with any questions. She's also backed up by her staff. Some of the things, obviously, all are fiscal payroll, everything accounting services for the town. And also, our I T technology is run out of there miscellaneous contracts for copiers and such. Also, our revenue services, tax collector, and Board of Assessment and Appeals, which is our assessor's office, as well as our town clerk's office as well. We're going to cover all of those and then some public safety and some general government follow that. And let's jump right in if that's our review chair.
Yes, please.
Okay. So Accounting Services, the total budget is four hundred thousand, four hundred and three thousand dollars, an increase of nine, almost ten thousand dollars from the prior year. The payroll increase is seventy-three hundred alone, and that's negotiated raises for the twenty-four raises, twenty-four, twenty-five union staff. The program budget increased by twenty-five hundred. This is mainly due to virtually a two-thousand-dollar annual finance software maintenance agreements that we have to have. If you, thank you, Lisa. Some of the, some of the bigger things here, look at the forty-four thousand, about four lines down. That's basically our munis system, if I'm accurate, right, Lisa? That's our munis system. Is that clear, Gov., as well, everything, or?
No, ClearGov is in your budget.
Okay, so but munis is obviously the backbone of our fiscal department and everything that we do over there. You want me to run through a bunch here or keep going independent audit?
Uh, no, let's stop on
Okay.
Accounting Services. Are there any questions on Accounting Services?
Was that two ninety-one?
Two ninety-one. Uh, since two ninety-three, this page is up on the screen right now.
The beginning page is two ninety-one.
Okay, I do have a question on page two ninety-three. But again, for the partners here tonight, thank you for everything you do for our town. Town and again, our town hall employees, I know they've been working extremely hard in these budget books and everything together. Just some small things, but I just do want to question on page two ninety-three, the regular payroll. It hasn't been up much, but is that due to increased salaries or overtime?
Yes, that is, that is negotiated raises as well as the twenty-four, twenty-five raises for unions, including their twenty-four, twenty-five raises for unions staff.
Okay, and that's
So not everyone's union, but there are, it's both raised, negotiated raises and union raises.
Okay, I just wanted to double check. And then the professional services is at four point nine. What's included in the professional services?
That's, that's our munis, that's where I saw it.
Manager. I think those are the only two maybe I have. Okay, let's see. Any other questions on Accounting Services?
Quick question. So I noticed overtime, like past three years, we have been hit five hundred dollars in overtime and then we're budgeting three thousand. Is that just? I assume that regular payrolls, no, them salary related type positions?
Yes.
Which I would expect a lot of overtime pay, not necessarily. I know people are wearing overtime, but
Yeah, there's a, the past few years, with COVID and everything else, we, we didn't have as much overtime. There's certain cyclical, cyclical times of the year that we do require overtime. This year, we're heading back up again to using that. Now, next year, in addition, and, and I kept this pretty much almost the same. I just included an increase for the wage increases that'll be happening. I'm intending on retiring at some point. Well, I'll be around and, you know, I'm not gonna leave you hanging, so.
So if we do have to hire her back or pay her to come back as well, we wanted a little cushion in there as well.
Okay.
Or there might be some overlap. We get somebody in early. We actually have a planning meeting. We've already had a planning meeting, but another planning meeting for her departure.
Okay, so if we bring her back, it's based on an hour rate. That's why you build in overtime?
So Julie, I'm going to try to steal her as much as I can or kidnap her, but or it depends. I just, it's a very, that is a very slight cushion to happen there, that three thousand, but just in case.
We had, we had put in, you'll see that there was a request of the department level of five thousand. That was to also have the consulting services. Depending on, you know, what happens, where it goes, some of this overtime will have to be by staff as well, the staff that's that gets overtime.
That's what happens.
And then the rest of it, we're hoping, you know, that we see nutrition savings that may be able to help if there's consulting. All that has to be discussed when, when the time comes. It's not right now. It's next, next budget.
Any other questions? My one question is, is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Our independent audit required by law that we have to have an audit to make sure our finances are all legitimate and there's no shenanigans. And it's both our, the town's share of the finances is audited as well as the Board of Education. We split the cost fifty-fifty. We use C L A, the audit firm. The, the budget price increased by six thousand dollars up to thirty-seven, five hundred. And I'm ready for any questions with that, or Lisa's already as well.
Any questions about the audit? Just me then. We signed a multi-year
Right.
commitment with C L A, and this is the first year of it?
Yes.
And we shot around.
Yes, remember, thank you. And is this sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
They contracted them out, so they did.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Miscellaneous support services, total budget of just over seventy-one thousand, increase of just over seven thousand. Equipment was added for the purchase of a new, new town, new copier, the main copier for the building here out of the town manager's office for seventy-eight hundred. But we also cut some fees down as well to have the increase of just over seventy-three hundred dollars. Also, binary increases of service contracts and fuel and oil. Any questions?
Questions on miscellaneous support services? Is, yeah, but I'm sorry.
I just looked at that miscellaneous support services is just for the finance and records department miscellaneous or is it?
Where are you?
I think on slide, on page nine of our packet.
Right, which, which item might you question?
I'm, I'm just asking a more general question. Miscellaneous services just for finance and records. I just saw
Oh, no, this is, this is the department. It's under the town managers department, but I manage it. And for this, it's, it's pretty much all the copying for the town, all the, if there's postage, yes, thank you. You know, pretty much the townwide paper for the town ink, ink service, you know, services on all our printers. It's all consolidated into this one account.
Miscellaneous administrative
Support services. So it's the support services to pretty much function with the printing and copying and mailings.
Right. What's the fuel and oil staff cars? Fuel services? Yeah, okay. All right, that's all.
Building inspector, pool car.
I listed them for you. I'm good. I trust. Okay. Just curious, send issues in the past. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, go ahead.
So the fuel and oil tripled? Is there like a tremendous amount of, I mean, the gas price has been pretty stable, stable since twenty-twenty-three, triple compared to twenty-three actions? So if I can have an actual number for the current year, that would be helpful. But it tripled that in twenty-twenty-three? Fuel, I mean, fuel hasn't really gone up that much.
Budget this year was twelve-six.
That's budget. I'm looking at action.
Yeah, the actuals, I'd have to go back to see some. There were issues also, and I know the Public Works Department is replacing the fuel system. It's in there thing, but there were times where certain things couldn't record, so they got charged to Public Works, things like that. That could have been part of the problem why it wasn't here.
I'm showing three cars, Lisa, here, but we have, in actuality, we are overseeing D P W. Nine cars, senior center, eleven car, about ten cars. So that there's ten cars. Forty-two hundred, looks like it's fair free, but I'm happy to get some clarity on that for you.
Now, the cars charged to this particular budget are the, the planning office, the, the building inspector, the pool car that everybody shares throughout the town, the assessor's vehicle.
Development, recreation, senior
Development, recreation, I think, charged to their own budget. I mean, it could be there. There's definitely the assessor, the planner, the pool car, and the building inspector are definitely charged to that account.
Is that new since twenty-twenty-three?
No, that's always been in this account. And I'm trying to see if I have the current year. I have the twenty-three actuals out there. Yeah.
Forty-four. If it costs in, we'll look into why that jumped up there. For some reason, I don't have it to note it here.
You good? Any other questions with us? No, so is this not a budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals? Yes, so you're twenty-five?
Yep.
And if this changes, Brian, due to the fuel line, you just make sure to update us. Places we can be caught. Thank you.
All right, I T and communications. As far as I T, we sub out basically our services. We don't have our own internal I T department, although Norrie does a great job of keeping track of it. We, we team up with South Windsor, essentially their town and use their I T services. So we have the backbone of their entire I T department to help us out. And it, I believe it saves us a good chunk of change at eighty-one thousand, essentially for one person. And we get, we get one and a half. How many people do you think we have kicking around here for that?
Well, we definitely get at least the equivalent of one person, but then when there's special projects, things like that, we have the whole staff, engineering, you know, people of higher levels, lower levels. So we have a realm of expertise at our, our fingertips for when we need different system issues.
Software went up about four thousand, but there's also some savings as well from them. And certainly, we can take any questions that you have.
Any questions on I T telecommunication? I have some. This includes the, the computers that are around as well?
Yes.
Does it include like the equipment in this room? The owls, the
Uh, yeah, sometimes. I mean, if, if they need replacing, we will look and see if there's funds available based on, you know, what's needed and we'll use it to replace certain things. And we have a replacement schedule of, you know, certain amount of computers every year to try to keep the desktops up to date and keep the software up to date and things like that.
And that's all paid for out of this?
Yes.
And what's the communications line?
That is our telephone systems, our internet provider, our
Civic plus?
Yeah, our website and the support services for the website.
Comcast as well.
The Comcast is our internet provider. We have the telephone system in the guy again.
Isn't there a fiber?
Yeah, the C E N network with the state of Connecticut. That's our major to get the, the fiber network communicating within its, so that's all within that communication success.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. We are part of the fiber network for super fast internet. But we also pay for Comcast internet?
No, you, there's you have, and I need our I T person to explain it. You have the fiber network, but you still have to get that gateway to get out to the network and get to, to be able to communicate with it. You just can't go right to it and the C the other part of it has to do with the telephone system being able to link into to that fiber, because our telephone system goes through the fiber. So you need to use the, the equipment to be able to get through the, to make it all work. Okay. And if I had my I T guy here, I'd be able to explain it better. I'm sorry. No, it's okay.
So is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goal for fiscal year twenty-five?
Yes, it is.
See, my town website stuff is in there as well.
Yeah.
Hey. Assessment Services. And our assessor could not be here tonight due to a previous serious obligation. The assessment, but Lisa obviously can answer any questions hopefully. The Assessment Services budget is just about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. It's an increase of fifteen, almost sixteen thousand dollars. Payroll is a big one there due to negotiated raises, both the union, non-union. There's not the basically budget increase of almost ten thousand dollars mainly due to a new request for professional services of sixty-five hundred for mapping services. Obviously, mapping is, is a big part of our, our assessment process. So I can take any questions on assessment services you have.
Question. All right, so it looks like in the twenty-twenty-three actuals spent three hundred dollars in training and development, and then it bumped up. Current year is about three thousand. And it goes up a little bit in this proposed budget too. Do you know what, what that training is and sort of value it provides?
Yes, there's, there's different certifications that the staff in that office must have in order to be able sign your grant list and everything else. I know in the past couple of years, again, because of COVID and everything else, there was also we had some turnover in staff, so we weren't sending the staff to the training because we didn't have the staff. So now we're back up again, back up to full staff, trying to get everybody trained, recertified. And, and all that is included in that number for their certification processes.
Okay, might explain why it kind of fluctuates a little bit too in previous years. Okay. Makes sense.
No more questions, please. Doesn't have to do with this. I just, we've been getting a lot of emails about concerns that values going up, that it's being, everybody's going to reassess next year. Is that true and is that gonna affect the budget even more next year?
The, the thing is, the, the assessor has just begun the revaluation process. The revaluation is going to hit for the October one twenty-four grand list, not this budget, the next budget. We do not have really good information at this point as to if property values are going up, if they're going down, if they're shifting from commercial to residential to high-end homes, to low-end homes. We don't have any of that data as of yet. He's in the beginning stages. So I really can't give you an answer as to, you know, is your property value going to go up or down or stay the same? Because it's just too soon to tell where that's headed.
Okay, I just wanted to check. We've been getting a lot of emails, the concerns about
The revaluation. A lot of times people think revow means your property is going to go up, but it all depends on the market conditions, the comparisons, and the diversification of the grand list.
Couple years ago, it went down a little bit. And we covered the impact and how that will be considered last night. Right, just wanted to clarify something. Any other questions here? Lisa, we came to in agreement on the cost of the revow. What, but that's not here, right, in this part of the budget?
Well, it is in a way. Each year, we set aside ten thousand dollars. We put it for a five-year, for every five years. And what we do is there's a separate fund under the capital non-recurring, which state statute allowed us to set an ordinance to do that. And we put the ten thousand dollars away each year so that it'll accumulate fifty thousand right around that amount to be able to do the revaluation when the fifth year hits. So you're not getting hit with fifty thousand all in one year.
Okay, what line is that on?
That's the bottom line here, transfer out to C N R E, ten thousand dollars.
And is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
Yes.
All right.
Board of Assessment appeals, six hundred dollars are made flat. Any questions?
Is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals?
Yes.
Hey. Revenue Services are tax collector. Total budget of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, an increase of just over nine thousand dollars. Again, payroll is the main part of that. Professional services increased, printing increased, training increased. There had been some deficiencies out of that office for years that were uncovered over the last year, addressed some staffing changes and some training needs as a result. Increase in postage and mailings and such as well. Aaron Bartlett's here, our, our tax collector, as well as Lisa, if you have any questions.
Any questions on this? Is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
Eric?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, Town Clerk's Office, annual budget of one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, increase of just over nine thousand, basically entirely payroll. Kathy Begon, our highly valued town clerk, is here. She assists us on so much stuff out of Town Clerk's Office. If you have any questions, her or Lisa can answer.
I just have a couple of questions. I need to answer the chat.
So I know it's an election year, so I would assume that's why some of these went up, that they're already helping overtime, right? No.
The only, the only accounts that really increased were the wages, which is the negotiated salaries. Professional services a little bit. That's because our grant went up in red, Kathy?
Yeah, the grant went up five hundred dollars.
So we have the revenue that went up on the revenue side, and you have to budget for the expense on the expense side, so that, that just covers that. And pretty much minor dues and memberships increase.
Right, I thought I was with a mistake. So you don't see anything going up because it's an election year then? Because I assume it's going to be a lot different.
It's in the registrar's budget.
Anyone, we're gonna see it.
No, I have questions there, you know, Monday, but thank you. I have just my standard question. Is this budget sufficient to meet program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be on to public safety. Do you want to come up?
You're good with my staff, right?
I don't think we've gotten to contingency. Right, contingency is me, right, but we haven't gotten to that. No, it hasn't. We haven't covered that yet. It's all so back, so choppy. It doesn't follow the book at all. Okay, so it's yeah, we'll get to contingency. Yes, thank you.
More? Comfortable this year. One more, Lisa?
All right.
All right, Division of Public Safety. Obviously, it's our Office of Emergency Management, handled by Chief Whitel. Very important, you know, emergency management is our emergency operations plans, our storm preparation, everything that has to do with FEMA and the state desk and just being prepared for any sort of event. Also includes our fire department, career volunteer, and the ambulance, animal control. And our resident state troopers also fond of that, but they will have a presentation or I will have their, they will be here and I will present their numbers on Monday for much discussion, I'm sure. Okay, next page, you can see that roughly twenty-one hundred or almost twenty-two hundred calls reserved in twenty-twenty-three. We have twelve town employees in the fire department, our public safety director, one fire marshal, eight career firefighters and E M Ts, two administrative staff, one full-time, one part-time. We have forty-four volunteer firefighters and E M T volunteers represented tonight here by Assistant Chief Dogan, also a volunteer, nine fire police, seven auxiliaries, and ten special members. Auxiliaries help out on scenes and such. The special members are basically the assistance in community outreach and so many things, but to include the toy drive on Christmas. A lot of training requirements, a lot of state mandates, a lot of safety mandates. You know, you talk unfunded mandates, John could just, you know, basically everything he does is a mandate. And, and a lot of certifications that, that are mandated to, to be maintained. They are all costly. We have four fire stations set, set distally around town, and then the Uh, we have uh, four fire stations, um, set, set distally around town, um, and then the main training center where our offices are uh, for administration and command staff. Uh, the stations are, are situated throughout the town, so that if there's an event in that part of town, volunteers can get to that house uh, quickly, get in the apparatus and get it to the fire, um, the, the locations uh, of our firehouses and availability of the firehouses uh, have an impact on our homeowners insurance throughout town. Uh, we are situated well. Uh, moving on to apparatus, we have two um, basic life support ambulances and one spare, four-engine tankers, currently one ladder, uh, ladder truck, one squad, uh, squad is the one that's out of uh, two forty right here on um, one through one ninety-five and hits the highway a lot, two tankers, I talk about the tankers a lot here in town in that uh, most of our town does not have water, and we have to bring water to the fights, those tankers are very important to us, and when I say water, I mean fire hydrants, uh, one light rescue vehicle, um, two four-by-four service vehicles, and one uh, fire police response vehicle, which we've uh, put to use uh, in greater length this year. Um, other vehicles, support apparatus, you can see there's some pictures here, uh, two command vehicles, dive operations trailer, um, our dive team responded to Bolton for the, the double drowning, um, and did we get in the water, John? Yeah, and we're in the water, yep, um, our trailer, our UTV trailer, our U, UTV terrain vehicle, and also a quad, and um, also our portable department message board that we use for um, so many other things, it's like the DOT thing that we move around, but we use it for um, town events as well. Alright, our public safety officers, uh, they, our public safety officers, whether or not responding to emergencies, saving lives and such, they also do equipment ma- uh, equipment inspection inspections, uh, maintaining apparatus readiness, fire prevention education, fire extinguisher training, uh, AED training, stop the bleed, um, school fire drills, lockdowns, and attend so many of our community events, and darn near anything else we ask of them, so uh, they, they do a great job, and you can see the bottom picture, um, if you go back one, Lisa, I was there, and they went down to the uh, elderly care place down off of the fountain, it was very, thanks, John, I'm losing my mind. Uh, and they, they did some great work down there with those folks, um, so this is, um, they do, they do a lot outside of just uh, fighting fires, obviously. Uh, the beef of our annual, uh, uh, public safety budget, water supply, that's the, the, the high, the fire hydrants, foot, ambulance services, uh, vehicle staffing, animal control, again, uh, two part-time, eight ACOs, um, emergency preparedness, uh, also an extra cost uh, for the chief fire prevention. Uh, that's, that's our fire marshal, Rob DeVica, he helps out, uh, make sure our, our building inspections and a lot of our economic development goes smoothly as they're um, building out new structures and such. Uh, fire suppression, those are our firefighters, and of course, our community emergency response team, our SERC team, you mentioned the electronic recycling event and the paper shredders, they respond to things like that and help, uh, they respond to uh, um, events on the green for fun, but they also respond to um, emergencies if, if they're needed or incidents. Moving on to our water supply here, um, basically, that, that's the cost for hydrants, it's, it's a rate set by Connecticut Water and WICA. Um, and the budget this year is a hundred and eighteen thousand, I'll pause there if anyone has any questions.
Okay. For your check? Um, so the department proposed, it looks like a budget, and you bumped it up a little bit, may I correct on that?
Because, yeah, suppose, okay. What happened was when the department put it together, it was an estimate, and then after, um, it had already moved over from department to manager, we got the final estimate from Connecticut Water, so we were able to increase it by the right amount.
Okay, okay, maybe there was an answer to that, thank you. Any other questions on water supply?
I can make one more point.
Please.
We, in, in the potential sale of our water company, we would uh, attempt to negotiate in some uh, pricing, locked-in pricing, or some savings uh, with this uh, down the road, so it's a negotiating point that we'd use for, I try to find some savings.
Okay.
It's a happy number.
I have a question, I'm, I'm on the budget book, I'm on page two fifty-nine on the budget change commentary. There, there are some monthly fee projected increases, um, but there isn't, there's not really an explanation of what those numbers are.
In regards to water or in regards to general?
No, we're in water supply, I'm on page two fifty-nine in my budget book.
Yeah. John can explain that, but. Basically, the woman did this, John, alright, you got it, okay.
Basically, what ends up happening is there's two different rate increases, the WICAS and then the Connecticut Water, so what ends up happening is a percentage of skill that's in the budget skill sheet that shows four percent to two percent. Those numbers don't come out, so January, the Connecticut Water letter comes out, and then as the states go into their budget process and the rest of the stuff, then that gets tied in, so they give you a rough estimate of where it's gonna be. So there's the mac, mathematical numbers, just, you have to take the mathematical's and go by the linear feat of what we have throughout the town. And then as other projects come on, similar to like Santini's developments and everything else wise, you gotta start forecasting for that, so there's probably about six six different hydrants or so that's gonna be added up into the Santini's projects and stuff like that, and linear feet's gonna start extending into that direction as well. So that's a projected outcome of where the number's gonna fall.
Okay, so there are, there's this, there are these three lines um, in the budget book, they say monthly feed projected increase per CE water, nine thousand three hundred thirty-five times three.
And then nine thousand seven sixteen times two.
What's, what, what are those values? With nine thousand three hundred thirty-five, what?
Linear feet.
Okay, times three.
Hydrants.
Okay.
So then they add, they, they do the estimate of how they come up with their mathematics, and they give that to me, and that's where we figure out the numbers.
Okay. Can we put this in like a table or something with, with more information?
This in.
Okay, or take it out?
Yeah, normally, we, we don't put that detail, we just talk about what it's for.
Yeah.
I think he was trying to be more transparent.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not really clear. Yeah, we just put a table together so that we understood, it's linear times hydrants. Cause that, with them completely unlabeled, I, I just didn't know.
I go back and forth with them every single year, and it just, it's one of their mathematical calculations, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I.
I try to figure it out.
Yes, but I just, I didn't know what the units were.
Right. This is like one of those service contracts that got carried over to my side.
Yeah.
And I've been still trying to figure it out.
Sure.
Christine Hunt and I, way back in the years, used to play, and then Lisa got here, and then we still fight.
And still try to get rid of it.
Okay, so we'll take it, we'll take it out of the town.
We'll.
Public safety and police.
No. You try that, smile down, not with me, um, we will, I, I think.
Town council budget, I just wanna.
I'll get it, I'll get, to that again, water, and we'll go back, and we'll get the scale, and we'll clean it up.
Okay, I mean, I don't mind that the numbers are in there, I just wanna know what the units are.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And then is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
As recommended by Connecticut Water and WICA, I can come up with their numbers.
So yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, ambulance service budget, um, five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars roughly. Um, volunteer stipends, payroll expenses uh, went up, um, regular payroll of about nine thousand, volunteer stipends of about four thousand, in regards to the stipends, uh, it's four thousand dollars over forty-two uh, volunteers, the last time they got a raise um, was in two thousand eighteen. Um, it's obviously not a lot, a ton of money, but um, I definitely wanted to, to keep an eye on it and start bumping it. And that, that's after review of what other towns um, do for their volunteers.
Are there any questions then?
Yeah, um, I just noticed other equipment is going up by forty percent, with some other equipment. The ambulance services budget, very last one. Which I didn't see. I'm looking at this slide. I'm gonna let John read to you what this stuff is.
Sorry, that's alright, I get it, okay. So the equipment is, you're basically, you're, so there's the biggest increase in that other equipment categories, you have a significant increase in the cost of the supplies for the uh, ADs, the refill kits, the batteries, et cetera. So those ADs that are in every fire apparatus, every fire station, the response vehicles and everything else, they carry two sets of pads, batteries, et cetera. We had those over the course of a few years, where they're all up, coming up with batteries, pads, and everything else. You will see that same line item probably on our public works for the town hall buildings and everything else, because there's an increase in those pads as well, so the prices have just significantly increased. We went to a heart-safe community years ago, and to meet, maintain that heart-safe community, you have to have so many ADs throughout the system, and I believe Walt changed his ADs in the school two years ago, after the grant, and we, you guys updated yours as well. So that's something that, it's a, to do town service-wise across the town.
Okay, how long, sorry, how long did those last?
The problems with the AD pads are?
Yeah.
We've had a lot of CPR bills the last six months, so a lot of them are starting to just end up getting replaced, and then there was a major shortage during COVID. And now all the market vendors have increased their prices for the pads, so increasing what's due for next year, those numbers should match.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, counselor, you check, um, so back on page two sixty-four, then Brian covered one. Purpose stipends went up, the training and development, it just went up slightly, what's changed and why is that so important? Is it on page two sixty-four in that book?
You gotta jump.
Sorry. I was looking around. Section. You were looking at that.
So that goes back to Lexi Paul, right, for the training platform and software?
Part of it is Lexi Paul for our, our online training, the other part is, we have, uh, we now have an in-house EMSI, who, uh, it's an emergency medical services instructor, who now handles all of our recertifications for EMT, CPR, that nature. Um, that was something that we contracted for uh, in previous years. So now we're doing it in-house, we save that money, um, we did come up with a um, uh, St. Francis Hospital has a new program for trauma, and it's a CME certified, so they get credit towards the recent recertification. Uh, and it's a app that the EMTs will go into and do real-life scenarios with the doctors, um, and it's, it, it caused the, uh, it was by swapping the two programs, um, it was just the, I think it was, was it a little over, a sudden, little over a thousand dollar increase
Yeah.
in the entire budget.
So you'll see that same increase, cause it's split, it's green, Lexi Paul, it's split between firing animals, so the total price is sixty-five, seventy-five, you'll see another, you'll see that same slide in the fire training side as well. So the CEUs are something that they have to go on, they gotta maintain it, and it's tied into the in-house as well. So you'll see that same line item in the fire suppression budget under training, yeah.
Okay. Are we talking just about anything with ambulance, we're, we're on this the fire prevention division, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong slide.
Ambulance service.
Ambulance service.
We also include a couple of EMT positions, training classes, and four new members that come in.
Okay.
Two positions, and that's fourteen, twenty-five of ours.
Uh, alright, so some other questions that aren't really in this book, but um, have to really do with more calls than anything, but with the backup ambulance and stuff, now that, have you, have we been doing pretty good and not losing money now that we have the third ambulance?
That was a great addition that you made to our fleet at the backup spare, we've had a couple downtimes with the other ambulances, and that was able to slide right in place. It has worked out fairly, it has.
That's right. Trying to break them all up between the different categories, but. Ambulance, um. Okay, the other thing is just a, a policy, but that's the ambulance policy, I think we should really work on that. But I think you've said that we're gonna be doing that during summer, and that doesn't have to do with the budget, I just put it in my notes under ambulance, but I think, um, Assistant by Chief and Chief, thank you for those answers. Are there any other questions under ambulance services?
Yeah, just real quick clarifying one, um, so the, I think we have an ambulance fund, but that's just for capital expenses, right, that like, whatever goes for its operating? Yes, okay.
You're good, yeah, counselor, check.
Yeah, question, clarification, so when, when's the last time, um, you mentioned that they received pay, pay raises?
Stipend increase, two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen was the last time.
Yeah.
And we're holding this flat at three percent.
So that's, the payroll line is different than the stipends for the volunteers, right, Brian?
Yeah, the payroll's three percent increase, that was a union, um, and the stipend go down a couple, about four thousand, which is seven point four percent.
Four thousand, okay, so fifty-four, fifty-eight. Okay, is there anything in this budget you excluded that you felt would have been critical to improving the state of the ambulance service?
So my budget process, like everybody else's budget process, is very hard, difficult, cause I'm dealing with career staff, volunteers, nine different officers submitting budgets and cutting, um, because I have to play the shell game as far as the fuel prices, the other things that are up there, so we pick away the best we can. Staff has been supportive, and I think we came to a mutual agreement, uh, between the corporations, the officers, and the union staff.
So through the, John gets hit hard with the budget process, um, by me, us, uh, he, I cut a lot all over the place, nickels and dimes, uh, but um, definitely a lot of, a lot, he took a lot of hits, um, and, and, you know, with equipment too, um, I cut them on the capital end, um, as well, so, um, the answer is, yeah, there's a lot, it's not like one thing that we can define, it's, it's just a lot of cuts here and there that we try to um, squeeze down as best we can.
Okay. Yeah, cause I know it's a capital intensive.
Uh, true.
Organization, a lot of big, big expensive equipment that goes into this, which is needed.
Actually, I have one question, hold on before you go a second time, are there any other questions?
Um, I just have a quick one.
Sure.
How many, how many volunteers do you have versus those kind of employees?
Forty-two volunteers.
Forty-two volunteers.
Yep, and then, um, forty, so twelve town, I'll give you the rundown again one more time, so there's twelve town and paid employees uh, in the, in the fire department. The director of public safety, that's John, the fire marshal, Rob DeVica, eight career firefighters, so two admin staff, one part-time, one full-time, um, in his building, and he's asked every year for two full-time. Um, and again, I, I can't, it's, it's always a bad year, um, to, to put additions in. Forty-two volunteer firefighter and EMTs, nine fire police, fire police, um, you're the other ones, ex terms of the scene, traffic safety, tell you, John, you wanna explain what they do?
Jeremiah, fire police said, black roads off, uh, so I don't need paid staff out there, uh, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, I don't have to get extra staff, they actually take the medic, bring back to the hospital, or take family to the hospital, so they respond to every and anything call that we ever have.
They're also able to, um, free up state police for their continued patrols, uh, blocking off a street and such, rather than, than having a trooper tied up blocking up, you know, a fire call all day, um, we can, we can pop them in there for now.
I don't have to leave an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck in the, over the road, service truck with.
Seven auxiliaries, ten special members, this doesn't include sir.
Yeah.
Alright.
So I have a couple of questions, and then we'll go back around for a second time, um, the repairs budget is going up, um, a bit, knowing that we're expecting a new ambulance to cycle out the oldest ambulance that has been, uh, down a lot, under, had a lot of repairs, is, is that increase really necessary?
You're adding a, you've added a spare ambulance. You're adding a, you've added, you've added a spare ambulance as well.
Right.
So I gotta maintain that as well.
Used.
So I'm gonna be fighting, I'm gonna be fighting that other one because I'm doing the shell game with. Replacing the other ambulances now because that's the biggest electrical, that's the one that's bankrupt enough.
Right.
So I'm gonna play a shell game. That other one's gonna have increased mileage. Hopefully, once that ambulance gets there. Then the new one will go down here, but the problem is the other older one's gonna go out. Who knows? Maybe I'll put the spare back into that line and then keep this as a backup spare, maybe rotate it that way. But I gotta, I'm still, we're still working the bugs out of that. Hey, they were saying the actuals have been way higher.
I know.
Okay.
I, I know they've been way higher because the ambulance should have been replaced several years ago, national backup. Got it. Yeah, we. We, we've certainly covered that, uh, and I know that it's been very expensive. Um.
You scored, you scored very well with that used ambulance up on you.
Good job. Thank you for that. That's. It's definitely, I've definitely seen it. Um. On the, in the budget book on page two sixty six, uh, with the performance measures, the actuals for twenty twenty three are, are empty.
That was, uh, you should have received a, a replacement.
There's a replacement page. I apologize. My bad.
Good catch.
Uh, and is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for facility year twenty five?
Yeah.
Thank you. So for a second time, Counselor, you checked. Another question?
Yeah, I missed my opportunity. Um, so on the weekends, is that when you consider yourself the shortest and, um. I recently heard from, um, our state rep that. We had to use, um, other towns because we were short set. Um, is that a typical thing around all the surrounding towns? And. You know, it just. Wellington and some kind of bar or. People come out here, Garrett. Uh, I know it's a lot of these people here, but times, everything in life, so.
Do you have a question?
Can I ask, can I ask everyone?
Yeah.
So. So basically, basically after the career steps over with, there's a duty crew on, there's a duty officer and a duty crew for ambulance. Talon is known to then also get banged with second call, third call or something else. Once that ends up happening, then it's a retone for other volunteers or whoever's around to come back out. Like I said about a month, two months ago. Nationally, just take, just keep an eye what's happening at the hospitals and the rest of the stuff. You, that ambulance during the daytime, it's the same at nighttime when that ambulance goes. You were looking if it's a transport to Hartford. They took, call goes out, by the time you get to the scene, by the time you wind up packaging, by the time you transport. That's about a two hour call. The other day, they waited forty minutes at Hartford Hospital because there was eleven stretchers deep. To get the patient off into one of the stretchers or something. So that's forty five minutes. So add that on to the normal transportation pickup, go to Hartford, come all the way back. It's those times are increases for all the services around us. So when you run a one ambulance or something else wise, and then also you have a second call, depending on where they go, yeah, you're, you're running and you're, you're pulling in another town, um. And you can't pinpoint it because it happens during the daytime and it happens at night, depending on, then. Some calls depending on what type of nature it is, you know, you run a CPR call, you're running three or four people in the back of that ambulance to swap out, going in and, you know, coming back. So. You might just put your spare crew that you had on a Saturday or something else that's now in that ambulance. So, um. Yeah, we, we have used mutually aid, uh, here and there, and we've given mutually aid as well. Uh, and I think we worked very well with our surrounding partners, but everyone's facing the same thing. Uh. Volunteers, manpower shortages, it's a national, a national thing.
Do you think it's because, um. What the? The older generation, I mean, the volunteers again. But I'm fifty now. Anyway. Um, anyways, I don't know, is there just less volunteers or people prefer to, or is it get paid? Is it?
We're very fortunate here because during the year, we're very fortunate to have the UConn students in our program of being tied in with UConn. We're very fortunate and, uh, we receive applications all the time. It takes. Probably about three months or so, we get them checked off, to be clarified in the back of our Reagan, uh, training wise. But, you know, we're averaging right, right now, that's not even included in the, the numbers of the staffing, you get fourteen UConn students. What happens, what happens when it comes time for June or July, you end up losing some of those, uh, students and, you know, obviously then, then we're back to square one and everyone's pulling triple double duties. Um, that's kind of what happens throughout, but, um. Some of the calls, yeah, you have to get a lot of older staff that's still with us and everything else wise. We're not getting a lot of new people coming in and, um, get a lot of burnout. Covid, covid did a lot of damage.
Do you think, yeah, just outside of, I mean, includes the stipends, do you think that's more attractive? Or part-time that's paid or something that would be, I mean, I know we're gonna be doing a study and this will definitely help us. I'm just thinking during budget time at least.
I think the study is gonna give us some great guidance and some great, uh, direction. Um, but every town around is doing the same thing, like, you know, Brian had said, we had, uh. You know, um. What is it? The Connecticut Conference Municipalities run different surveys in different towns and we've gotten spreadsheets and we've reached back out and sometimes shares, sometimes don't. And some towns pay for, you know, different hourly, so. It's, that's all another magnitude. That's another whole bookkeeping, bookkeeping and taxing and who's, who's keeping track of it. So. It's a lot of moving parts and as you start doing animal stuff. You're gonna have a reactive area. What's gonna happen with the firefighters? What's gonna happen with the other ones? If you're, you're doing something for them, what's coming back over here? It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a revolving wheel.
Right. Um.
Yeah, it'd be really interesting. I believe that. It's on possibly the next, the generally. Um. Talking about the studies and stuff. Those studies are not on the general. Are they? A waiting.
Yeah. I'm done. Just. Get going.
They are, um, we're, you're having a, we got a response for one, we had, we find two what we wanted. We got a response for one.
Okay.
The other one seems to be asleep at the switch. We're gonna give him another week, um, and then we'll push it out, uh, put out an agenda.
All right.
That was as of yesterday.
Great, that's great. I think. Yeah, rather than, we don't have. Staff, not your fault of course, but I wish there was a way we could problem solve that. But. It's a.
Just to piggyback off of Colleen's question, just a question to clarify. I conveniently. Almost died on the Friday morning, which is great for Talon Fire Department because it was a slow time and, and you're welcome. Uh, but had I done. Had I, had that happened to me on the weekends during a busy time, do you feel like we're, we're sufficiently covered for our, our town right now? I know there's things outside of our control as far as the hospitals and, and the problems they have right now on during busy times, but. For the part that we can control right now. Are, are we sufficiently covered where we need to be covered? If I decide to do it again?
That's it.
What was your address?
One thirty three Dockwell Road.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Um.
Honest answer.
It, it, it's. You could ask Ellington the same question. Our guys went to Ellington, it's a thirty two minute trans, thirty two minute ride to the town of Ellington for CPR bill. Because they were both amulets were out and I think Vernon was running two or three calls. So we went to Ellington for a call night or weekend, we go. Every town gets hit in different times of place depending on the nature and how busy you are. Um, but. It, we've covered things in town pretty, I, I don't think I've. And then according to yet or gone through stuff, I think we've covered and we've handled and very fortunate, very blessed, uh, with my staffing and, uh, the calls and everything else. I'm very fortunate. I, I mean, I. I bet, I, I praise them all the time. So we're very fortunate. We do the best with what we can and who we got and, um, we keep plugging along. You could, you could maximize a lot of stuff and then. Get people hanging, nothing's going on, then you're gonna go back and say, geez, we've got three. It's a, it's a, it's a catchaway to the emergency services. You can't, can't pinpoint it. You can't put a schedule together when it's gonna happen. I mean, when, you know, the dive call happened, I lost three people during the daytime. Two of them were in the water. So it's, you know what I'm saying? So that, you know, you have different time shifts during the daytime of when they start and who leaves and who comes in and there's not a lot of staff around during the day either. So, you know. Could have been dealing with that tractor trailer roll over at four thirty, five o'clock in the morning. We could have been out there, you know? Went to Union for. That fatal. You know? So it's tough to, tough to kind of answer that. We're, we're doing the best we can with what we've. Can manage and have.
On the county level, they've changed the procedure now for.
Retone.
Mutual aid for retoning. So if we, if we have a call and our, our crews are tied up. And it went from a five to a three minute window. So it starts the clock quicker. Uh, and then a mutual aid ambulance will, will be, um, started. So there's less of a time lapse. With bringing other services into town.
So it's a change for the better.
We change your county policy because of obviously significant calls and services running more and more calls, but keep in mind a three minute return time. Jump up at a, you know, that's a second group, jump up out of your bed at three o'clock in the morning, run outs. Start your car, get your stuff. Three minutes goes fast. I mean, it's been times and places when I jumped in my car at one o'clock in the morning, I'm like. Really? I, I mean, I just gotta, you know. People don't think about it, but. It's a fast time, but it's for the benefit of the quality of care of the emergency call.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
More I am there.
Got it. I'm gonna flag that address tonight when I lose her.
Also, Brandon.
Uh, so Jen sort of asked the question that I was thinking about, but. Um, so I completely understand that there's a lot of things outside of your control when you're transporting someone to the hospital, things of that nature, but with mutual aid. Are residents safe if they, like, are we able to provide that coverage that they need? I understand, you know, times.
Our mutual aid partners around are just as good if not better and it's equal with us. And we work hand in hand with them, Vernon, Ellington, Coventry. Ellen, I mean, all of Wellington. So, you know, Wellington might have coverage, but a lot of times they're out. At a time and price. So either Stafford's coming in or Talon's going in, or UConn comes out the backside. So. Great services around the area. We have a lot of good, we have a lot of good people out there.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for the department too.
Counselor, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, so with the cuts that you've seen, uh, in your opinion, if the budget is, um. Amended, when the budget's amended, what, what would you like to see back top of your list if, if we were to bring something back for you budget wise?
I'd have to sit down and work with Brian and see what we cut and what's the best. Place and category between the staffing to see where their recommendations were. I would take. Obviously, recommendations for my staffing and, and team and come back and then say, Brian, say, I think this is the best, uh, category to move forward with.
Okay.
Counselor.
Yeah, are we a net beneficiary of, uh, shared services or are we a net receiver, uh, contributor to these? These types of, uh. Services.
I understand historically, we're, we are out more, uh.
We go, we go to the other town.
Yeah, oh, last year when their, their ambulance is coming down, um. We, we clocked back up, um, to some degree.
Okay.
That's my.
So we, we went to other towns a lot a couple of years ago and. Lisa's shaking her head because she likes to watch the numbers, um, but our numbers went up. Well, then we lost and then we were out for four, five, six months. And, you know, staff in different places were getting upset for running mutual aid wise. Well, now you're receiving it. So be careful when you fire the arrow across the street because it's gonna come back to you. So, you know, it's, right now, it's a pretty level playing field, I think. I mean, between Ellington's come here, we've gone to Ellington a couple of times. I mean, depending on the nature. But it's, uh, I think we, I think everything's kind of ironed out, evened out right now.
From a cost perspective, it doesn't matter if we're serving a, a, a person in Talon or in Ellington or Vernon, right? We're basically billing the insurance companies. So. It's not like it's a cost to the town in any way that we're providing these, these net services.
No, you're going back and then, I mean, the state capital right now has got the biggest thing that's going on with the Medicare funding and getting that back and everything else, which that should be, I, I hope, I mean. A lot of us went and testified and stuff like that to state capitals, but that's a big contributor. But, you know, that's, that's where the numbers also fluctuate, you know, not that we're in it for the numbers and the, the, the money, but yet that also supports the services. Um, so hopefully that will pass.
Okay.
That's one question. Is there any objection to Counselor Chuck going for third time? Okay, go ahead.
I'm just gonna run, kill him for this idea. Have you ever thought about staggering some of your week? Firefighters on the weekend when you might not have volunteers. Available, you pay them overtime or something.
So my goal's always been for the last ten, twelve years, try to cover that six to six timeframe because of, we were back in the stage of not having a lot of volunteers or anything else down the road. If we ended up getting that safer grid and the other types of process, then we were gonna extend that. So that you can maintain your volunteers and have an accommodation department because you're not running them from six to six. Now they would be picking up after eleven o'clock. So we wanted to spread it out a little more longer. Um, but that's a whole different avenues once you start going to weekends. Because then you gotta take your staffing, you gotta figure out how you're gonna do your weeks and what needs who's working what.
Well, I wonder if there's something, you consider, you know, there's staff and shortage. Like it's overtime or I don't know how much that would look like or something, just something. It can't be every weekend that you're. Don't have somebody there. But if you know somebody. Everybody's at the same graduation party and there's nobody around. I don't know. Yeah.
It's an open-ended sword too. I just say, question a lot of my staff and a lot of other people, it's an open-ended sword.
Yeah.
When you start putting, I mean, some other towns have started to go to that. Model plan, but when you start putting a paid person next to a volunteer. You're still gonna be walking through the door?
That's true. That's a good point.
Just food for thought. And it's hard because that's where the fluctuation is and all the levels of pay, all the levels of, you know, some people still like that volunteership and different things, but it's an open-ended sword. So hopefully your consultant will.
Yeah.
Give some great recommendations and some guidance.
Trying. At a box, but you make a good point.
You know?
Like that.
We ran into that when we were going to Vernon a lot. Because Vernon, we were going to lift assists and Vernon had their firefighters or, they have firefighter E M Ts, but the. Big deal was while the ambulance gets paid for it, we don't, so we're not going.
Interesting. Okay. Scratch that off my. I thought it was a clarity error list.
Not so bad, yeah.
Just an idea. All right, that's outside. All right, I think we have covered ambulance services.
Hey, moving on to animal control. That's a budget of sixty nine thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. Uh, expenditure is about twenty three thousand dollars, almost twenty four, and payroll expense almost forty six thousand dollars. The big increase, an increase, uh, total of about eight, just over eight thousand dollars. The big one being. Um, as you can look, we haven't done any work on the trucker and put away any money for the, the truck for years. Um, so we, we put some money in there, less than what was asked for, uh, by the chief. And then, um. The bulk of what they do is, is, is driving around and that's, uh, where we are at that, um, increasing the fuel and oil as well.
Are there questions on animal control? Counselor Butler.
I'm sorry if I missed this. Did you say how many calls there were this past year?
For animal control?
For animal control.
I did not, nor do I have that in front of me.
I, I felt like I saw it somewhere.
Oh, wait.
Maybe in the manager's.
Nope.
But maybe it was manager's report. I felt like I had seen the number.
Well, did you look on page two seventy?
Right.
It's probably the GO, it's probably the clear GO.
Measures.
This, this should be in the clear GO book, right?
Yeah, there's, uh.
There you go.
That's where.
Complaints received.
Okay.
That we are looking for.
Yeah. Um. How do we compare? To other towns with animal, I mean, is this a relatively low number or is this kind of average?
So it's. It's pretty average compared to some of the other towns.
Okay.
Um, you know, obviously your, your towns of, uh. My A C O was working in Talon and then in Wellington before. And then they started doing more enforcements and running numbers and running stuff. So the numbers in Wellington kind of didn't, didn't kind of compare wise, but when you take Ellington and Vernon, those type of towns, um. It's about on the same average. it's about on the same average, uh, as far as the number of calls and that type of stuff. Um, but that also fluctuates depending on the weather and different things, warm up weather, people out more, dogs, et cetera, et cetera. So it changes. Come to, come time of April, the numbers will go up.
Sure.
We staff one person twenty-four hours a week.
Okay.
Um, during the weekdays and then, uh, one, six hours a day Saturday and Sunday. Uh, as well. We have an animal control facility. There are new state mandates that they put on everyone's animal controls facility. In fact, Wellington's got shut down. We are skating a thin line. Um, John somehow gets them to pass us, um, very closely every year, but that's running out. We have five years to get a, a new facility done. We're looking at grants, um, and everything else to get that. We had a meeting out, um, with John, myself, animal control, D P W, our building inspector, Megan, our grants person, um, at the facility, um. And so that is lying out, uh, in the capital as well.
And so that led to my next question, cause I knew that was gonna be an issue coming up. Have we explored regionalizing animal control? Um, since we're gonna be facing that down the road.
We have, um, and continue to do so, and it has not been overly fruitful. Uh, Wellington seemed like the most logical, Ashford and Wellington seemed like the most logical part for us. Um, in order to obtain grant money though, Ash, we couldn't include Ashford based on how the, the, the grant money was set up through the state. We were able to include Wellington. The previous first selectman, um, had kind of stymied, uh, John in that. I met with the current, uh, new first selectman. He would love to start talking, uh, about regionalizing, uh, this as well, especially considering uh, that, you know, we, there's gonna be a new facility coming. Do we need, do they need to build one and do we, we need to build one? So, um, already had a, a meeting with, uh, Wellington on specifically that and something we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I might, I might end up stealing a couple.
Yeah. Sorry, yes.
So I, so last year, a lot of the expenses in this account were paid from a dog fund. I was wondering, what's, is there any money left in that dog fund? Um, is it exhausted? No? Okay.
Do I have the number with me now?
Okay.
But there, there are some funds in there. Um, what we did last year when we were trying to find reductions for the budget was to try to use up some of the funds in that dog fund. Um, again, there's, there's other things besides these expenditures that you see here that are also charged to that dog fund, um, when it comes to, um, things through the town clerk's office, which yeah, um, there's, there's licensing that fees and things like that that runs with the town clerk's office. There's a fee that we have to pay the state of Connecticut. Um, that's about um, fifteen thousand a year. So all of that comes out of that dog fund in addition to these other operating expenses. So it shares some of the balance that's in there. So last year, yes, we took about fifteen thousand dollars out of the balance to try to cut the budget back. And you're seeing some of those, you know, there's still some cutbacks this year as well in this budget to try to use some of those funds in that. But I don't have the exact balance with me. It's, the year's not finished yet.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna recommend using funds all the time, you know, in operating expenses. So I'm not necessarily in favor doing that this year regardless of the balances. I was just kind of curious. Um, does the money that goes into that fund, does that mean like adoption committees or stuff like that, or is there anything else?
So there's, yeah, three dogs, right, from Hebron?
Yeah, so three dog, I, I'm still taking three dogs from Hebron because it's still tied up in court. So we're getting paid to house those dogs now, so.
Part of your regionalization.
I mean, it's.
That was that major house that was.
Yep.
They took several animals. So, uh, several towns split up the animals and John gets paid to take care of it.
Okay, okay. Good context. Um, so I have, no.
Thank you. Did anyone have that? Councilor Shuck, go ahead.
So were you afraid about my yellow? Um, so the fuel in oil, you just noticed it's, is this the first year you've requested fuel and oil?
No. Well, man.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, because, because it was my finagling last year that I'm answering for him.
Okay.
He did have a request for fuel and oil and all that in his budget last year. Again, we were looking for ways to reduce the budget and utilize the fund balance as I had just talked about. Um, from the dog fund. So he did have those expenses last year. They were probably around the same amount that he's asking for. It's just they're back this year where we had taken them out and used other funding sources last year to pay for.
So where did you take the money out of last?
The dog fund.
Okay. So would we, if we needed to be, I think Jen, you talked about the building itself. That's on a capital plan or is that gonna end up in that capital?
I don't know. It wouldn't, no, cause this was after we had done capital. And the state came out with their, um, their mandates.
Okay.
And then we went out and looked at it and realized we're, he's gonna get it in the capital plan. Um, and then we're gonna look at some cost saving ways and, and other towns to partner with.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, Brian. Yep, that's it.
And Megan's gonna sniff around everything she can.
That was an easy one.
Are there other questions about animal control? Yeah. No, okay. I, I have a couple of questions. According to the, um, according to the audit from last year, uh, the fiscal year twenty-three flows uh, for the dog warden was a hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars?
That's probably about right. I don't know.
Okay, I guess I hope it's right for that, that.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't have the book in front of me, but that's probably about where it went.
Okay. So, um, the decision was made to move these uh, three, six, seven, eight thousand dollars or so in expenses off the dog warden's account onto the capital budget, or I'm sorry, onto the operating budget.
To, to put, it had always been there, but last year we had decided to use some of the dog fund money. But the share wasn't discussed.
So it wasn't in there for the fiscal twenty-four budget? Uh, they weren't in there for fiscal twenty-three?
No, um.
Or twenty-one, something else happened in fiscal twenty-two.
That we, unfortunately, the way this looks here, it makes it look like we haven't spent any money in those line items. Because of accounting process, what we do is you have a budget each year. And then when the year starts, we have to transfer all these little budgets to the account called transfer out. So you will see at the top of the line on page two sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Or, or even here, uh, on your report. This was the full budget in these years, okay? When you worked on the budget, there, there was numbers in pretty much each one of these, um, well, these were the actuals, but there was numbers in each one of these areas when you originally built the budget. So what happens is the money gets transferred to the dog fund or the animal control fund. So it all gets reclassified from these budget accounts into these accounts here so that the entry can be made, the journal entry that we have to do to take it out of the general fund and to put it into the dog fund. It's a one lump sum transfer out. It's the type of account that you have to use to do an inter-fund transfer. So you won't see the actual expenses here for these items because it's all moved up into here. Um, and then, but when you're working on the budget, this is how it was, how it's set up. So you get an idea of what he's gonna need the funds for. And then it would be moved, it would be moved up when we start the operation of the year.
Okay. So.
Oh, that's a dog fund. Oh, good, you have this one. This is. Today.
So the, so then I'm, then I'm not sure.
So so far this fiscal year out of the dog fund, we've spent almost sixty-three thousand dollars so far.
Okay, but we put sixty-one thousand dollars in for operating expenses for this transfer outlaw.
Right. And we're using some of the money that's in that fund to offset the financial. Is that what it happened?
Okay.
That's what, see, as you see in.
I got it. I understand what you said.
Okay.
Why does this, why does this budget operate that way? This department budget operate that way? Is this, this is unique?
It's, a lot of towns do have this sort of thing. They'll have a dog fund, a separate dog fund, because there are special state requirements that, that we have to report each year. Uh, there's a special report that we have to do. We have to, um, account for everything within this report, number of dog licenses and, you know, did you do a survey? If, if they do a, what is called a, a special survey, we don't have to pay the state as much money as if, if we didn't do it. So you have to account for everything separately, but the fund itself cannot support financially without the assistance from the general fund. Many towns do this as well. So they'll fund some of the money in the general fund. Whatever else they can get from revenues from dog licensing, things like that. Stay in that fund and and it's all consolidated. And then the report goes to the state of Connecticut.
Okay. So I, I'd like to go back to the repairs, clothing, fuel and oil and other equipment. Because if I understand this correctly, last fiscal year, those items were paid for directly out of the dog fund and we didn't dedicate operating fund expenses for them.
That is correct. They, uh, the, the fire chief did ask, uh, John did ask for it in his budget. We were trying to find ways to reduce the budget the best we could.
Uh huh.
And, and there were numbers that we were trying to get to. And that's where we focused on, okay, where do we have any other money that we could use to still provide what he needs to do the services? And alleviate the, uh, impact on the general fund.
Okay, but if we have a balance of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars or so, if we're carrying that balance year after year in the dog fund, we could put this eight thousand dollars back to the dog fund uh, and, and be able to do that for ten, twelve, fourteen years, all things being equal.
Depending on, yes, you, you could consider that. And, um, you know, once you were getting into your deliberations, that was something you wanted to, to look at. We could certainly look at that. Um, remember also though, is that you do have issues coming up with, um, repairs of the pound, things like that, that are not um, not budgeted for. So the reserve in there has been in case something major because there are significant issues there that John can speak to if he needed to.
Okay.
So that's why we haven't, we haven't just tried to raid the entire fund in the case that, you know, if it gets shut down or whatever, we're gonna have to rent another place or, or something. So we're trying to keep safety in place in case of an emergency like that.
Yeah, so this is another, uh, reserve account in case of an emergency above and beyond our general or unassigned fund balance.
Like, it's not normally considered a reserve like our municipal stabilization or, um, some of our, like, education reserve. Um, there are reserves in that fund, but it's not normally considered that. It's not normally, okay, it wasn't designed to have that amount of money throughout the years. It's, it's accumulated over the years.
Okay.
Okay, so it is, it is acting as a reserve, but it's not identified as a reserve.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Alright.
Okay, uh, how do we, how do, beyond us depositing money from our operational account into the dog fund, how else does money get put into the dog fund?
I mean, we just had the, the Hebron case that's, when we rent, do rents and that type of stuff, if, if we board a dog, then there's a charge for that. Um, right now, right now, we're going back and forth with the licensing dog and everything else wise. Um, that's not, that money goes from the ticket. That obviously goes back to the state. Uh, it's too bad if we don't get the money for the ticket, which is whatever, but that's, money goes back to the state. But when we pick up dogs, animals, we pick up stuff, um, that's that. There are donations and different families do birthday parties that they donate the, uh, money towards the dog fund, but we actually leave that for a special adoption. So when we have a sick or something else wise, we use the adoption money to, you know, for the vet bills or something else, cause that's hard to budget for those type of processes.
Sure.
Um, but those are the normal things that get contributed to the dog fund.
Alright, if you have the. And is this, that's budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
With police's assistance, yes.
Alright, I think somebody wanted to go for a second time.
Um, I'm good. I should have answered.
Oh. Awesome, okay. Looks like we can move on. You didn't have another question? Looking for on emergency management?
Yep, um, so this is the, basically, uh, uh, not the right word, but a stipend to achieve by tell salary to handle the emergency management, uh, division. Um, as you can see, that it's seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. It's, it's all things, uh, emergency preparedness. Very good at it. Very well respected at the state level as well. Uh, but we'll be taking any questions that you have.
Any questions on emergency preparedness? No, I think the next one, we're on page two seventy-one to two seventy-four. Okay. I, I, I have just, um, again, looking towards the town council budget. Uh, in, uh, page two seventy-one, the last sentence of the introduction paragraph is, uh, verbatim repeated in the first section of the budget change commentary. And if, uh, you guys wouldn't mind just choosing where that should go and only having it once. I'm on page two seventy-one, the introduction paragraph. The last sentence of the introduction paragraph is repeated verbatim in the first sentence of the budget change commentary. Fifty percent of the emergency management director's stipend for services is funded by a federal grant. If we could just choose one place to have that, not have it both places, I would appreciate it.
Take it out of the commentary.
And then under, um, I'm on page two seventy-three, program objectives and goals. The first one is to continue with ongoing effort to identify and create a permanent space for the E O C. Um, and I thought we had a permanent space for the E O C.
Just my train, so that.
Is that not a permanent?
So right now, what you have in that train, what that is, right now, if something happens in town, but what ends up happening is we do rent that building out, so you have to kick somebody out or vice versa. But it takes me four hours to take all the stainless tiles and start popping all the wires down and setting up all the workstations and the rest of the stuff. Um, it's always pretty cool to have something else that's plugging, playing the sides of the walls and the rest of the stuff, but it just, not that we use it all the time or anything else wise, but, um, you know, everything's locked in cabinets and pulling stuff out, phones, the radio stuff.
Sure.
Um, cause every department head has, you know, a different station. Um cause every department head has, you know, a different station while while it's been down there uh for this stuff. So everyone has a different spot and I have to keep their stuff there, but um it'd be an ideal situation, but. You know, if there's a grant or something ever comes out down the road that we can end up, you know, doing something to tie in. I mean, we've gotten some grants through this that has tied in some technology and stuff like that, but um. We make it work, but it's just always been a target goal there.
Target goals accurate. A lot of your figure towns and cities have dedicated um emergency operations centers. Right now, the the fire training academy, I believe, is is. Good and sufficient would be accurate. If there's an emergency that we need the E O C, I don't care who's in there, we're taking them out and that's all there is to it.
Yeah.
Uh however, if in. Our building situation throughout the town, an area identifies itself, John secures a grant, who knows? It'd be ideal to have our own dedicated E O C depending on, of course, then future costs and everything else on top of it. Um but something I'd be mindful of, but as of this, this point, that is not one of my highest priorities, but certainly a um. Be a nice Christmas gift to Fomo Sam one.
Okay, and is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty five? Anything else have a question? No, excellent, let's. Fire prevention division.
Moving right along, fire prevention uh. Fire protection uh division, the budget's eighty seven thousand five hundred and fifty three dollars, payroll expense around uh seventy seven thousand uh. And basically the budget's down um for different reasons and and cuts. Uh does anyone have any questions?
Questions, council you check. Well, it's gonna go right, right to the cuts. The communications is down. Is that what this is about you just talking?
We've reclassified a lot of cell phones and different types of things, so I, the plan got cut down a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
iPad wise, something like that.
Do we just not need those anymore?
Um not right this.
And. The other services and fees is. Negative a hundred percent.
So that got moved down to the uh servicing, uh Brian had asked me about.
Repairs, it was better defined in the repair line.
Okay. Okay.
The big thing for him was, you know, the uh the books and subscriptions.
Okay.
Down seventeen hundred.
Yeah.
Um there's all kinds of code, basically is the best way to say it, that he has to maintain and and renew and he doesn't have to right now. Do that, so we saw some savings.
Is that? They, I just kind of follow up on your comment, Brian, so. Is there a time though that you have to renew the subscriptions? Like is it every, at least it's chicken, I had, yes.
That's when they pass it and legislation wise and the rest of the stuff. So it sometimes it's every two years or. Sometimes some new electrical code's coming out versus a different fire code and he's gotta get that subscription or that book to maintain, so. Um he felt that he should be able to get through right now and he's, he's the one that suggested to me and I said, perfect.
But we should probably, where are the next counselors? Probably should just keep that.
It's major code changes. There aren't any anticipated um. Right now for the, for this budget cycle, like you can see the actual sometimes have been higher, lower, um all over. Rob's a pretty good, you know, obviously um he gives us a square number.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Or maybe that question. You're good. I know that. Thank you. Any other questions on fire prevention? Uh is this, yes. I'm just gonna ask a question. I appreciate the answer for it, but is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty five? Yes, thank you.
Hey, fire suppression, this is our firefighters, um and uh. Firefighters expenditures, payroll and our volunteer uh stipends as well. Uh regular payroll up nine thousand. Uh service contracts up seven thousand. Um are the, are the big ones in there. If you have any questions, that's a big budget, obviously. Um any questions, we're here to answer.
What what's?
The council.
Yeah, sorry. What are the service contracts? Just curious.
So my service contracts are um. Every huh, every apparatus goes through a uh a federal D O T inspection and then everything needs to be pump tested. All the hoses be tested, all the ladders need to be tested, um and you have servicing of the annual fire pumps and the rest of the uh equipment. And then a big one that uh we were not maintaining, they obviously uh we're doing, we have two major air compressors at two of the main, major stations. We were only doing annual uh air quality tests and now the servicing contract and the air uh regulations have changed, we, I gotta do them four times a year. So that is what really shocked me and awed me uh as far as that. Um and then all the S C B A's get tested. Um so there's some small increases on the other ones, but the big nut drivers, the air compressors that fill up the. Uh S C B A's breathing apparatus as well as my uh diet tanks for my divers.
So the resources driven by like requirements.
Yeah, and then now the requirement of which I fought for two years and I even actually um. Sent the bill to one of the companies because they used one of my days and used my electricity and that didn't work out well, but uh they charged a fuel charge. And if a service car comes with their company, now now they're all dumping fuel charges. So the fire hose testing companies are driving up here from New Jersey, they're taxing, they're paying there. It's just paid it forward. Um so there was, there was that last year I got caught off guard and I just, I. Right, everything else this year and said, where's your estimates? What are you doing? So um that's where the big nut drivers are.
Other questions?
Maybe you provide this. I need to pull out this budget that you like to see in it, kind of help improve the fire. Safe for building, fire suppression components. You only have a one point seven, then.
No, I I I mean, it was, it was hard, it was hard doing a show with all the different staffing and different people. I mean. You know, staffing is just as much as important as equipment and the rest of it, but when you get there and the prices are just still going, I mean. You know, it's just, it's hard because it's hard to budget throughout the year to say replacement boots and the rest of the stuff and the prices have just. I mean, fire gears. Fifty five hundred, six thousand dollars just for a jack in the pants. Now everything just, the market is just driven, um and then there's back orders. So, you know, um. You get your back calls where you get stuff directed, we we manage and uh try to do best with what we can.
So your head count, head count is kind of where you want it?
Yeah. Head count as far as.
What's that? Yeah.
Probably that, probably get. Recommended and ironed out with a consultant and we take the recommendation. I mean, we we've tried to get safer grants. We just can't, we we haven't been lucky in town with the, with the grants.